Raise for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, including the public which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty.
Next I'd like to have a motion to approve the agenda tonight.
Second the motion.
Need a motion.
I make the emotion, I make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
Second, sorry.
All in favor? Okay, second item is the approval of minutes from June twenty first, nine, uh, twenty twenty-two, and B, July nineteenth, twenty twenty-two. Motion. Or are there any adjustments or corrections?
Not for me. I move to approve the, um, agenda minutes, to approve the minutes from June twenty-first and July nineteenth, twenty twenty-two.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Third item is TX twenty-two point oh seven point oh three, SMB of Greenville, two LLC submitted a text amendment of application to amend the Stallings Development Ordinance to add a business center zoning district. And B, statement for consistency and reasonability.
Alright, thank you, planning board. Um, so the applicant is here today, and let's see, let me just scroll down. So I just created a memo today. So, the applicant is submitting a new zoning district to, for a text amendment in, uh, for business center in our ordinance. We currently don't have the business center zoning district, it's a brand-new zoning category. They intend to enhance the ordinance to add a, the district for industrial and a commercial district combined. We currently don't have a zoning category that has both a commercial retail component and an industrial component. They're all separated. So the definition of business center is below, it, like I said, it's for a commercial, office, retail, light industrial use. And then here are some, uh, zoning district comparisons for the, just the setbacks. So, there's a proposed business center at the beginning, I'll zoom in real quick, because I can't even see this. Okay. So we used to have an old business center zoning district in the twenty-twelve UDO. We got rid of that zoning district in twenty-eighteen with the adoption of the new ordinance. It's very similar to that previous business center zoning category from twenty-twelve. And it's, fits right in between mixed-use-two and industrial in terms of setbacks, um, because mixed-use-two doesn't have setbacks only for a single-family detached that it has setbacks for. And industrial kind of has quite large setbacks, I guess, to preserve the, uh, any neighboring, uh, properties. So, the proposed business district that the applicant put in is right in the middle of that. So they did a lot of changes in the ordinance, so...
Who did?
Um, the applicant made, actually created this text amendment.
Okay.
And they proposed all these changes, so they are making a definition in, uh, Article Three. They're adding it into the table of uses in Article Eight with, um, a description of the zoning district and a allowed uses in the use table. I also have the use table in another, um, uh, attachment in case we want to go over that. They also have a signed highway building lot type. So whenever we're in the ordinance and we're building, uh, for the business center, they would have to follow this highway building lot type. In Article Ten, they have a lot of supplemental regulations for, uh, specific uses, and that's what that's for. They're also adding buffer requirements, sign requirements, and open space for it. So just the regular things that all zoning categories have. When we look, the zoning category up and explain it, um, they made all those amendments to add them. So the history on this is, this started because, um, there's a property off of Blindheim with, it's a light industrial retail commercial area. We rezoned that mixed-use-two in twenty-eighteen with the adoption of the new ordinance and the Monroe Expressway Small Area Plan. When we hired a consultant Destination by Design, they studied this area and they were hoping for a redevelopment of the area, not just specifically its property, but the entire area around that. So that's why that's property was zoned mixed-use-two. And currently, right there, um, is, they have the following uses, they have construction companies, softball, a rifle and pistol club, a CrossFit gym, they have medical supplies, furnishings, they also have additional buil-, um, businesses currently. So, um, this is just an, uh, overview of where it is, it's adjacent to, um, there's a storage facility, and there's a Stone Creek, uh, townhomes that are currently under construction, right, right adjacent to it. Okay, I'm just gonna skip down. So, for future land use, um, there's no current future land use categories that fit this commercial retail light industrial bus-, uh, business center zoning district. The closest is probably suburban office center in the, in the comp plan. It allows multi-tenant professional offices, corporate offices, medical offices, but no light industrial. So, when I, when I'm thinking about the recommendation, I don't think this business center is a bad zoning district at all, I think it would definitely enhance our ordinance, but it doesn't fit our future land use plan. So, just based on that, staff recommends not approving this item, just because it doesn't fit the super, uh, future lanes plan. But, I did want to let you know that if it was to be passed, it would not hurt the ordinance anyway, it would enhance it. I just don't, I, when I look at other areas besides this Blindheim area of Stallings, I don't really see many other areas that it would be beneficial to have this zoning category. I think it would definitely help the applicant in that area, but other areas of town, I'm not quite sure. So that is my recommendation, and do you have any questions for me?
Could I see the, um, use, the proposed uses?
Yeah, of course. So, let's see, I'm gonna zoom out. So it's, it's actually really hard to see this zoning.
The other one that you had up there, the first thing that you had up there?
Oh, um, let me go back.
The smaller end.
Oh, here?
No, keep going.
Okay.
Yeah, I think, I think.
Okay, this is just the lot dimensions.
Oh, that's just the lot dimensions, okay.
Right, yeah, so the first, the first column is the proposed business center district, the second column is the previous business center zoning district that was in the UDO in twenty-twelve. The third column is mixed-use-two with the property that this all started, the discussion is zone now, that there's a zone mixed-use-two. Um, and then, they want some side of, sort of industrial component there, which mixed-use-two doesn't allow. So that's why I also included industrial here, so you can kind of see the comparison.
How can I see the, the other one you had up?
Yeah, of course. So, when looking at this zoning category, it's right here in red, um, so it's really hard to see this chart, but, um, I printed, let me see if I printed this. Did you, yeah, printed on another use table. This is just, um, this is a handout copy, if you guys want to see a close-up, I do have it here, this is just our, uh, copy that we're gonna record with, if you guys look at that. It has a lot of commercial.
Hard to see in the world TV.
It, yeah, it's hard to see, um, even when I'm looking at it, I get dizzy, um, daily. So it has a lot of commercial uses, a lot of retail uses, and it also includes light industrial. It doesn't have anything hazardous, it doesn't have anything, um, controversial allowed in it, I think that the uses are appropriate for this category. And I think the applicant did a great job with their text amendment, um, writing it and, uh, with the uses.
Wait, you can send me that packet, I never got it.
Um.
I didn't get the email.
Did you, do you have access to email?
End of the week, Wednesday or Thursday?
Yeah, I'll just check.
Um, I don't have access to emailing it to you right now, I apologize, but the packet is up here, um, if there's anything specific that you, I'd like to, I could show you, or go over it again, I'd be happy to do so. So here's the definition of business center, I can read that for you guys. Oh, also the applicants here, if you guys want to ha-, save some questions for them.
What was it, about, um, ten thousand square feet, was that for the lot?
Yeah, that's the minimum lot size, um, proposed, in the zoning district. As compared to, mixed-use-two doesn't have a minimum lot size, only for a single-family detached, and like, industrial has thirty-two thousand four hundred square foot minimum.
Two what?
Uh, minimum lot size. So they have to build at least ten, on a one thousand square foot lot, if they want to build on a proposed business center district.
Okay, it doesn't seem very large for industrial, ten thousand square feet.
The previous, um, business center district in twenty-twelve, um, it's very similar to that, it didn't have any, um, previously, any minimum lot area.
Really?
So now they are proposing some lot area.
Are you planning to put something on this?
So this is just a general text amendment to add into our ordinance, the, it did start with that property that I discussed, off of Blindheim, but if it was approved, then they would apply for rezoning to rezone the property to business center. They currently can't do that because we don't have that zoning category, this is what it, they're trying to add it.
So it just seems to me like a lot of these are industrial, and then, well, it doesn't say fast-food restaurant, but it says restaurant with drive-thru, wouldn't that be McDonald's?
Restaurant with drive-thru, yeah, it could be McDonald's, I would say, is it a CZ under a drive-thru?
I don't know.
No.
Hard to tell the lines what.
Just look that use up, real quick. Sorry, this is computer slow.
One, one ninety-one.
One ninety-one, thank you. Without drive-thru window. So, all the drive-thru uses kind of are conditional zonings, so this would just allow for a restaurant, kind of like, um, maybe a Panera without drive, a drive-thru, that's...
It has a drive-thru.
There are some, yeah, I'm trying to think, maybe, uh, I'm like, blanking out what a restaurants don't have drive-thru, there's so many.
East Coast Wings.
Yeah, like an East Coast Wings, Hickory Tavern, that would be allowed in the zoning category.
What does CZ mean?
That means it's required to go through a conditional zoning, so it has to get council approval to be, uh, allowed that use.
So it's, you still could put a McDonald's, or...
You could, but it would have to go through council to get approval.
So what is on there, what is on there now?
Um, so, they're current, so this is just a text amendment right now, we currently don't have the zoning district.
Right.
But, the intent is for the applicant to rezone this property off of Blindheim. You're not considering this tonight, I'm just giving you some history. This specific area off of Blindheim, which is off of Independence, um, close to McGee Corporation, it, it does fit that mixed retail office light industrial component, which we currently don't have in our ordinance. So if they did rezone this business center, it would fit this property, it just wouldn't fit the future land use plan.
Does the text amendment affect anything closer to town, um, closer this way, that could potentially be an issue further down the line?
Possibly, because you'd be able to rezone, um, and if it's not a spot zoning, like a smaller property or a specific, specific case, people would be able to apply for this zoning in the future, but, or any rezoning to this category would have to go through planning board and town council in the future as well. So there is some component of review. And until we fix, uh, review the future land use plan and amend it, all rezonings to this category would likely be a recommended denial. But we do have a plan, maybe next year, by the, by the end of next year, to revisit or rewriting some of the future land use plan, to keep it updated, to add, uh, make it consistent with our current zoning categories.
Get easier to understand?
Yep, exactly. So in the future, it's, it's possible. Also, we did, um, we did approve, the town council did approve the conditional zoning text amendment last month, so now we are allowed to do conditional zonings on any property. So, that could also be, uh, a component, if like, if this wasn't passed, they could also apply for conditional zoning to allow these specific uses that are in business center.
Lost here.
What can I, what can I do to help? Maybe, maybe applicant can explain it and have a presentation, would you, would you be okay with that, uh, Mr. Kohler? Okay. Alright, so I'll let him present this, yeah.
Great, thank you, um, yeah, if you step up, well, you step up here too. My name is Colin Brown, I'm a land use attorney with Alexander Ricks in Charlotte, uh, my team and I handle zonings, uh, for developers all around the Charlotte region, really appreciate Max giving that overview, and he's right, so we're here really just to talk about this text amendment, which seems very technical, but I think it helps if we give you some context of why I actually ended up here. So Max has done a good job of showing you the properties, and the properties that brought us here, this is already developed, like, this is a, uh, business center really, uh, that has been in place for a number of years, I've got, you can see, uh, the property addresses here, and what is interesting, um, when this was developed, it had an industrial zoning. When the town adopted its new unified development ordinance, it placed a new zoning on the property, which is now MU-two, uh, the property owner was not actually aware of that, uh, so he didn't realize the zoning had changed, and went in to get a permit for a business and found out that some of the business operating in the center now can't be expanded, and similar businesses cannot come in, because they're not allowed in the M-two district. Interestingly, so here's our site here, these multiple properties along Glenham Lane, there is, uh, industrial zoning just north of the site. And so, as I mentioned, the current MU, so what we're trying to figure out, i- if you look at this center, that, and I'll let Peter talk in a moment and tell you his history with it, he's, he's got a lot of businesses in there that are good businesses, and I encourage, if you'd like, go by and look at this property, there are general contractors' offices, uh, there's an equipment rental company, uh, there's some back-office space for an automated guided vehicle equipment company, there's a logistics and trucking company, there's an HD supply company, there's an ATM servicer. So the, this list here are examples of businesses that have been in there and operating that are not allowed in the, in the zoning district that we're in, right? They're allowed to continue because they were there first, but if we have another that wants to come in, they're not allowed to come in, and that, they may not be able to expand. So as you can imagine, this is a real problem, uh, and, and when you look at it, I think if you do go over there, these are good businesses, you know, there are things that you want in the community, they're hiring good folks, they're keeping people employed, they're paying good taxes, uh, these are the type of businesses that, that I think you would want in the town. Uh, so this is the immediate issue we ran into as, well, what do we do? And here's a look at it, if you go through, I went over earlier tonight, there's a real eclectic mix, there are folks out running and walking around, because there's a, a fitness, uh, club in there, there's a, uh, baseball training center, so there's a real mixture, I think it's a good-looking, um, park, I think it's well-maintained, I think there are good businesses in there. And when we met with Max, he didn't, and staff, no one disagreed with any of these. There's an example of train, so this is if you're a train installer, this is where you come and get your equipment, so they supply that there, and I think those are businesses that we want to see. When you look at the area, so I've got, um, Peter's properties highlighted in red, but you can see what's around it, there's McGee, which to me looks quite industrial, uh, there's some self-storage, there's a little, uh, kind of extended stay motel, um, so there's kind of, kind of big tech, so, to me, when you look at this area, and I know the, the issue and the reason that Max is saying he can't support, is you all have a land use plan that is calling for this to be a mixed-use area, you know, kind of, you know, the mixed-use everyone loves, you know, walkable residential and, and the types of service you'd like to see, uh, to be honest with you, if we look at the character of the area, I don't quite see that, we're, we're not disagreeing, so we're trying to kind of come up with a compromise that works. Frankly, I think this does have an industrial feel to it, but as we talked to staff, we said, well, first of all, could we just zone back to industrial? Because you've got an industrial district in your ordinance, that's what we used to have, that would allow our businesses, this area looks pretty industrial to me, and Max said, well, we spent a lot of time, I'll stop saying that, staff said, we spent a lot of time on our plan, we do have some future plans, uh, we have some concerns from council, so maybe we don't want to backslide into heavy industrial, right? And so we said, okay, then what are our options? At that time...
It used to be heavy industrial?
It was industrial prior to your, to the adoption.
Heavy or light?
Uh, I, I'm, I, I don't know that y'all had the districts, I think it was your regular industrial district.
Think it was just owned into IND.
Uh, so again, kind of some looks at the properties around, so what we, we talked about were, when we came and approached, we're not looking to do the heavy uses, this is not heavy manufacturing, it's not noxious, there's no adult businesses, and so, our, our problem that we ran into was there really wasn't a category in your ordinance to have kind of a nice business park, somewhere where you could have a general contractor's office, where you could have some distribution, where you could have, there wasn't that fit in the ordinance, so we talked about that a good bit, and we said, well, what can we do? And, as we talked, you know, staff said, well goodness, you know, prior to two thousand eight, we used to have kind of a business park zoning, and so we thought, well, that's a nice option in the toolkit. So it's a challenge, you know, the, the challenge we found with the ordinance was, there just wasn't a box that we fit in. This isn't a heavy offensive industrial use, but it's not quite, you know, your residential mixed-use either. So what we felt would be helpful for you all, uh, and for us in Stallings, was to have an option, so to create a zoning district that would allow, uh, these types of uses. So that's, we, I've got a, a great associate that works with me, uh, she took a stab, basically based on the old ordinance provision that you had for this business-centered district, wishing to provide locations for employment-centered uses. The dominant uses in the district are light industrial and office, ancillary retail and other supportive uses are permitted. For planned developments, the external appearance of buildings and signage, along with modes of ingress and egress, are planned to provide consistency throughout the development. So it's just not a hodgepodge, there's a unified development. Hospitality uses, um, a- as well as necessary supportive services may be allowed. So this is kind of the framework for this zoning district that we've, we've posed, that would give you an option a little bit lighter, uh, than industrial, but cover some of the, the uses that we need, uh, including, uh, office uses, some of the light industrial, and that you can spend, I, I hadn't gone through that table, probably there's a detail I should either, but our goal was, we went through with staff and said, hey, if they're, they're baddies or noxious uses, let's cross those out, so they wouldn't be allowed in this new district. And really, the goal having office, light industrial, wholesale, warehousing, restaurants without drive-throughs, uh, and indoor recreation. Frankly, on this site, I don't think a restaurant wants to be there, because it's out of sight, but the idea is to create a zoning, I'm not trying to create it just for us, um, but there might be someone in the future that wants to come build a nice business park, without you allowing in heavy uses, that we thought it would be a good tool in the toolkit. Things not permitted, specifically excluded, your hazardous material, production, storage, your junkyard, your foundries, chemicals, paints, textiles, uh, scraping waste, kind of ruling out the baddies. So, that was really, our goal was to create this district that works, um, as I, I think staff has pointed out, if, uh, we approve this text amendment, it doesn't open the door, because that zoning is not anywhere, there's, there's not any of that zoning sitting on the ground in the city. So you don't have to worry, okay, we've created it, now someone can, it opens up that district, it just puts the district on your books, which means we have step two. If this, um, if this general district is approved, and we now have this business center district, we've still got to come before you and say, hey, here we are to specifically zone our, what I'm laying here, site, to, um, to the business center, and then you would approve those on a case-by-case basis. In our opinion, this just gives you another tool in the toolbox for a, a functional zoning district that you might want to apply in other areas of the city, doesn't open up any doors now, uh, but I, I think it's a good zoning district, because right now you just have industrial, and you may not want to, I, I can understand why you're not wanting to apply industrial in areas where you might have a future redevelopment vision, but we thought a, a nice moderate district like a business center using your, the format from this town was a good one. I'll stop talking, turn it over to Peter, let him tell you a little bit about his history, uh, the businesses in the park, why he wants to be here, and why having this option is very important for us to be able to, to go forward on the site.
Perfect, thank you. Hello, everyone, appreciate y'alls time tonight. Uh, I'm Peter Kuchel, I'm from Greenville, South Carolina, so made the trip up for this, uh, very important meeting for us. My partnership and I have owned this property since two thousand six. Uh, we bought it from the original developer, uh, and we obviously bought it, uh, for what it was, uh, for what it was, uh, originally, um, planned for, you know, permitted for, and constructed for, which was to be a, an light industrial park. Uh, we've maintained it for the fifteen or sixteen years that we've owned it, uh, we're constantly spending money on keeping it, uh, you know, looking nice, so it's not a, any type of rundown warehouse, uh, park by any means, I think the, the pictures will, will show that. And, it's, it's very, it's an unusual set of circumstances while we are here, that I think, uh, you know, Colin hit on. We, we were last, um, December, November, I guess November of twenty-one, uh, we had a situation come up and going to pull a permit, and all of a sudden it's brought to our attention that the property has been rezoned. And I've owned it since, again, two thousand six, apparently it was rezoned in two thousand eighteen, um, and I was never notified. Uh, I mean, there was no notification given, there was no letter sent, there was no phone call made, um, I'm told there was a publishing in, uh, one of the journals, which unfortunately I'm, I don't get, or don't receive. And, um, had I been made aware, I'd have gotten in my car that day, and I'd have driven up and said, hey, what can I do to prevent this? Uh, as I understand, there was a period of time where I could have, it would have been an easier process, but three years had gone by before I was even made aware of it, and so we're sitting here just scratching our head like, how in the world does this happen? And I'm, I'm one of the owners, and I'm an asset manager for a partnership, I have three partners, and they're all in their seventies, uh, they all live off this property, this is their retirement, this is their income, and this is their livelihood. And, um, the park was designed for light industrial, and when we were told it was MU-two, I started going through the MU-two, and I said, there is nothing in MU-two that fits. I mean, we have truck courts, we have drive-in doors, we have dockside doors, uh, it's not a walkable, um, park, you know, we are surrounded by a twenty-foot creek bed to one side, we're surrounded by a tree line, we're surrounded by Independence Boulevard, we're surrounded by McGee Corp. So, it's not that this property can all of a sudden be a part of a greater connectivity, walkable, some type, of, of the uses that are in MU-two. And so, when I looked at it, I said, as my tenants go out, I'm, I'm, I'm left to die. I mean, I, I can't put anything in the way these buildings are designed that are MU-two. It is, it is truly light industrial, and so when I, when I called, uh, staff and said, help me through this, what can I do? We're not wanting to do anything obnoxious, we're not trying to change anything, we've owned it this entire time, and we've never done anything obnoxious, and we're not trying to change. Uh, we just, we're just trying to protect our park and our tenants, and, um, so, there, there were not a whole lot of, I guess, options or direction of, this is the easy fix, in terms of, uh, you can rezone to this or that, that, and, so there was nothing where it just fit into what it was designed and permitted and developed to be. So we've kind of been down this, uh, long, you know, eighth or nine-month path, trying to figure out, what's the best, best path? And, and we are, uh, our, our group is, is very open, uh, and, and we're, we're just trying to get a, find a solution, and we are hoping this is a solution, it was one that we spoke back and forth with, uh, with staff, just knowing there was just not an easy answer, uh, in the book, the way it was, uh, the way it's written. But it is, um, I, I am just wearing my, my, you know, heart on my sleeve, I was a little perplexed, you know, to find this out, and, um, it was, it just doesn't make sense, um, I, I think is, Colin went through, it, it's industrial, and, but I don't, I don't need that, I don't need heavy industrial, it was that, but I don't need that. We never use that, we don't need it, similar to, we don't need restaurants, that's part of, I didn't realize that was in there, but, w- it'll never be a restaurant, it is truck courts and, um, contractors, and that's all we're trying to maintain, so, um, but I'm, I'm happy to answer any, any questions.
Yeah, and, and just say, you may be saying, well, why, you know, are there other ways to get here? You know, our, our first recommendation was, we'll ju-, we'll zone it industrial. You know, at the time, the feedback we got was, well, we are trying to move away from industrial, so SK, what are our options then? There wasn't really another zoning district, so, the, the goal tonight i- is, and I know we've talked about this for context, because I think it's important, but, really, all we're asking tonight is to add this business center district to your ordinance. And I guess my one disagreement with, with Max a little bit on that is, I, I, I heard Max saying, maybe that's not appropriate on this site because of the land use plan, but, we're not really talking about this site tonight, we're just talking about that district. Do you, would you approve a business center district in your ordinance? And if it is then in your ordinance, then the next conversation we have was, does it fit on this site? I think a business center district provides your town with more flexibility, so if you've got great developers that come in with something a little more intense than your MU- your MU, but less intense than your industrial, you've got a district that works for them. It gives you a new tool in the toolkit. You never have to apply it if it doesn't work, you know, you get, just because of the tools in the toolkit, doesn't mean you apply it to a piece of dirt. Somebody's got to come through this process, and this board and your council will determine whether it's appropriate for that piece. But we're just trying to add this tool to the toolkit. I appreciate Max, Max's positive comments on it. We spent a lot, we spent a lot of time, this has not been an inexpensive undertaking, to draft a new provision to your ordinance. So Peter and his team, I, I think have been, I think, very patient with the town and staff, and really trying to be collaborative. So we're not here saying, zone us back to industrial, which frankly, we'd prefer. That, that would have been the easy route. We spent a lot of time and effort in coming up with something that we think really benefits the town, and, and I hope we've made an investment for a district that you'll now have in your ordinance that will benefit y'all in the future. Happy to answer any questions.
Next, can I see the, the map that shows all the surrounding, what, what the zoning districts?
Beginning of their presentation. So here it is. So Blindheim is actually this, like, this street right here? And all of the, I don't know if I'm saying it right, is it Blindheim, Blind, how do you say it?
But, uh, Blindheim, yes.
Okay.
It's kind of like my last name.
Oh, yeah. So it's, so to see this property right here starts right here, and it's, it's back and forth, all up in here. It's currently zoned mixed use two, and it's adjacent to other mixed use two properties, like the Stone Creek Townhome subdivision. The Willows is right north of it, it's an apartment complex that was approved.
Where's, um?
Can we see if there's a?
Independence.
Yeah. Yeah, so Independence is right here. I'm actually, I'm going to pull up another mapping software for you guys, that might be easier for you guys to see if the computer wanted to work. Have you guys used Go Maps? Or have you heard of Go Maps? Okay, great, I just want to make sure. I don't think the computer wants to.
I have a question outside of the property itself, the, how, how often is it that text amendments are made by private entities, not done through the town? Such as this?
So I would say, a lot of people suggest text amendments to the use table to allow specific uses, or to do, change a sentence in the ordinance, but not, I've never in my career, I'm only, I mean, I've been planning for seven years, I've never had anybody submit for a new zoning category. So maybe it's an every-seven-year thing?
Yeah.
I've never had.
And if I may, when, when it came up, we had asked staff if it was something that they preferred to do, and I think their workload seemed like it would take them some time, and I think that's when, you know, Colin said, well, you want me to take a first stab instead of, you know, you know, a little bit of extra months, just based on your workload, getting the draft started. And so we're certainly, we were just trying to help push it along.
Yeah, they've been very patient with me, they actually contacted me like my first week in Stallings. I didn't know the ordinance very well back then, I thought I could just suggest a conditional zoning for the site, that was in case. So that's why we just did the text amendment to allow.
We thought was a great idea.
Yeah. Which now, that's why we had the text amendment recently, to allow conditional zonings, because that has been a very big hindrance for a lot of properties in the ordinance.
I'm not saying that I disagree, or whatever, with anything that's been said tonight. My only question is, does this open a Pandora's Box for future, you know? I don't even know that.
Developers?
Yeah, developers to come in and say, hey, I want to create this specific thing to allow us to do this specific, you know, and kind of.
So with this zoning category in the ordinance, I would see, I would say a lot of people might be interested in creating a development like this. We actually.
And again, I'm not specifically talking about the development, I'm talking about them coming in and being able to just change the rules.
Oh, anybody could do that anyways. I would say it could start a Pandora's Box, who knows? But I would say it doesn't start a precedence with one approval, I would say if you did it again, then yes.
And it's just, it just seems different than what I would expect, is the only reason.
Yeah, and I would have honestly, probably wrote it myself as well, but this is the time that Colleen and Matthew were both, they both quit. And I, you know, the workload got increasingly heavy, and heavy right when they were quitting too. So I told them, I said, if you want me to write it, it's going to be a lot longer than, you know, your time, timeline. So that's why we're here today, they, they did write a good text amendment. I do think that they've been very patient, they did a good job researching the business center, I think it would enhance this specific property if it was rezoned. I'm just not 100% sure about other properties in the area, but it's possible. We just don't have any future land use categories for it.
As long as there's like a checks and balances on other properties, as long as it's not just a, you know, we can approve and get it.
I don't think you have to approve anything else.
You're just approving the text amendment to add the zoning.
No, I know, I know.
Somebody else comes up.
I'm just saying, like, yeah.
So this is the Blind, Blindheim site, is there any questions about the surrounding properties? So I would say, I'm going to select real quick, just so you guys know, this Blindheim site, the, the reason this discussion for the text amendment started is because of this property right here. And so the, to this side of the property is McGee Corporation, to, to the south is Stone Creek Townhomes, and to the north is The Willows, which is an approved apartment complex.
What, what street is the, The Willows?
It's off Stevens Mill. And then this Blindheim is off at Independence, right, kind of right across, almost from Scott Clark Toyota.
Looks like there's green space between that subdivision and?
There is a floodplain right here where no one can build. So this is, this green space will be preserved, and then Stone Creek will just build right here, so, and if you're looking out the back of their houses, they probably won't see this development. But I do think this is also preserved as well, in The Willows, this, this adjacency, so though if you're looking at the apartment complex, you might not be able to see this, unless you're like on the top floor. We just approved these construction documents for this apartment complex, but it was approved back in 2019, I think.
And what's that other one to the?
This side, right here.
To the, I think it's the north of the Townhomes.
This property?
Is it north, yeah.
This is actually, this property, we actually heard last planning board meeting, this is Chuck Dry's property, that got approved last council meeting to be rezoned to SFR1 for mixed use two. He had that tax increase from $2,000 a year to $20,000 a year. And he's not been able to sell his property, so he, he got approval to rezone it back to the original single-family zoning. Yeah, the, the water and sewer issue for Union County has been a hindrance for him to sell his property. So he doesn't want to hold on to that zoning anymore. So if he were to sell that property, I think he, we would get a rezoning with it, because no one would build, I don't think it would be cost efficient for someone to build single-family development there, they would only be able to build 20 houses. Any questions about the text amendment, though? I know, I know, this is probably something that we're going to discuss if the text amendment's approved, I think this will be a great thing to discuss. But I'm, I'm still, I'll still go over it if you want, I just want to make sure that you focus more on the text amendment today.
Yeah, and I guess I'd say, so the question, is it the text amendment's not approved, what do we do? The only district we then had is your industrial district, which I understand it was, you did not want that level of intensity. We didn't, so, so we were trying to create a step down in intensity, from industrial to a business park, to give you that option. If you don't want that option, we are just left with industrial.
So basically, you're saying that you're, you're prohibited right now from having the same kind of businesses?
We can't have a, we can't have a general contractor's office, we can't have, train cannot be in there.
If your general contractor leaves that group, that building, another one cannot come in.
Yes, sir, that's correct. If we have to pull a new permit.
So the same business space, yes, they would be able to allow, allowed to come in, as long as there's not a, I can't remember how long, I think it's like six to eight months vacancy between those uses. I don't, I don't know how long, but there is a time period where you can still apply in that specific unit for that same use. But if they wanted to, let's say the Crossphagim there wanted to become a general contractors, then no, they wouldn't be able to.
What's that triangle, that gray triangle, what's that zone?
That's in Union County, it's, I think, they, I didn't actually research that, but I think it's zone light industrial in Union County.
So that's industrial zoning that touches us?
Yeah. Yeah, mixed use two doesn't allow industrial uses, but it does allow a variety of mixed use retail, residential component, just not industrial.
So am I hearing that the Stallings planners are in favor of this?
I recommended.
Generally, not on this property, I, I think generally the text amendment, not just on this property, I think.
Yes, I, I do like the text amendment, I do think it enhances the ordinance, but my, my primary comment is that it doesn't fit our future land use plan, so I have to.
I didn't catch that.
It does not fit our future land use plan. So it, it recommend a denial, because it doesn't meet that, that's how I make my vote, my decisions, is the future land use, comprehensive land use plan. I don't use it as, I don't, I don't make, sometimes there is, I can make a personal choice, but I'm, I'm using the plans that were adopted by town council to make my decision. The plans to help me make my decision do not fit with this new text amendment. I do not believe so. There is no future land use category that has a mix of.
Yeah, I just wanted to separate it from this specific person in the recommendation.
I, I would say if we, we got the, if, if the text amendment for this zoning category was approved, I would likely say that it's a great, great fit for this property, there's still no future land use category that exactly fits business center. So at, at the time, I would recommend denial, but in the future, you know, when we do our, redo our future land use plan, I would make a zoning category that does fit it. So I could recommend approval in the future. I just can't do it right now with our current plans.
What about it? What about it? What doesn't fit?
So we don't have a future land use category that has both office, retail, and light industrials, either or.
Okay.
And this is both, this property is both, and this text, this zoning category is both. And we also, you know, we don't have a zoning category that fits both, that's why they submitted the text amendment.
And if we approve this?
I don't think anything bad would happen to, if you approved it. I think it would just help the applicant.
And the council denied it then?
Yes, the council can approve or deny it. Yeah, they can do whatever. You're, remember.
Take our decision in consideration.
They would, they should.
They should.
Well, I don't get them.
I mean, that's why you're, you guys are a planning board.
They're the ones who can change the.
They're, correct, they're the ones that make the final decisions. I mean, you guys are a statutory board, so they, they should be taking your decision seriously, but I, I don't know, they can make their own decision still.
Hey, I was just going to make the comment, if it is denied, and we have to go back and go through industrial, and all of a sudden, I think as staff had shared, was, that's not something they would approve of either, then I'm left with a business park that just gets vacated, dilapidated, and rundown. And so it's like, how do we, how do we fit? I, I feel like this MU2 overlay was put on it as a district, as I think I remember hearing somewhere between 30 and 40 parcels, I don't have the exact numbers, without possibly anyone going out there and seeing what this park consists of. And so it, it's not a, it's not a, you know, one, one box fits all type situation, because if you look all around, I've got self-storage, which we didn't point that out, but right beside me, that's self-storage, and then I do have a huge buffer creek, and you have the motel that I wish that would go away, but it's not. It's been there the whole time. And so the MU2 just doesn't really, certainly doesn't apply to our, well, applies, but it, it's not consistent, and there's no way we can even amend our park to meet it. And I'd say the same with McGee, and we're not trying to redevelop, it's not a redevelopment play, it's, it's just highest and best use is what it is. And so we're, we're just left, it's like we're left with nothing, and, and I don't know. Very odd situation.
A little while ago, you had said, you'd offered to write it for them, if they would wait.
If I had written it, I probably would have written it very similar.
And you would have approved it.
So.
Right?
Yes, the, the issue is, the, the comp plan doesn't allow me.
Right.
But I would have probably tailored it a little bit different to fit a future land use category, like suburban office complex. The only issue is that none of them, none of the future land use, uses allow industrial besides the industrial future land use. I would say they do have options, even if, so you guys are a recommendation board, then final decision would be at the town council. And then if this was approved, they could go through the rezoning. If it wasn't approved, they could apply for a different zoning category, I do think business center is better than industrial. And they could also now apply for a conditional zoning, just did a text amendment to allow conditional zonings on any property that was approved last month. So they have another option for a conditional zoning, I don't think they want to go that route. I think if we did have that conditional zoning allowance back when they applied for the business center, that's probably the route they would have gone for, it would have been the easier route, but they're not building anything. So the easiest, when we were negotiating discussions, was for a text amendment.
Any other questions?
Can we, if we were to, not approve, but send a positive recommendation to the town board, but could we take some things out? Like, I don't, you know, why do we even have a restaurant in there?
You could recommend your approval with the removal of a restaurant use.
Okay.
Just remember, it's a recommendation board too, don't, I would make it a little bit general, yeah, general.
It's just a stepping stone, this can be amended at a future date as well.
It can be amended, I probably, I'm going to be probably bringing text amendments to update that use table all the time. So you're going to get one every other month, probably, because the ordinance does need a lot of changes.
It also is shopping center. Don't need shopping center.
And I would say it's tough, if you're, so the idea is that we're writing a business-centered district for the ordinance, so.
Right, I understand.
For our site, we don't need restaurants, we don't need shopping centers, but when you're trying to do these generally, you're not just writing for yourselves, you're trying to think, what if they really did have a business center? You know, in a real office park, you, you might want a restaurant, you might want those things, so we try to do it, it is not narrowly tailored specifically for Peter's property. It really was to give y'all something in your toolbox, so if someone did come in and, and offer a traditional office park, you've got a zoning district that does it.
Yeah, you got to think about all of the, all over town, if this, if a property was to be rezoned this zoning category, what uses would you like or not like in Stallings? I don't think you dislike restaurants, or dislike a shopping center.
But each, each.
But you said there's no other place anyway.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Each, each request that comes forward, we can be.
And now with your new conditional zoning model.
Certain things and?
Yeah.
Hold on, I'm sorry. I apologize, there was multiple people talking, can you?
Well, if a particular track came forward and wanted to, to the business park, and they wanted to include certain things in there, can that be?
They would have to go through, no, they would have to go through a conditional zoning to allow different uses in the use table.
But that would work now with your new amendment, we, we could technically do a, this business park with a conditional plan, and rule out any of those.
Yes, I would say that would be your option. I would, I would recommend.
Then we want a business park conditional. I'd say we could have a business park conditional.
Yeah, they could. It's possible if this was approved, yeah. No, it's okay.
It's nice to have a small meeting, so we can just have a dialogue.
Yeah, I think council.
This is not traditional.
Council's going to be a little more like.
Yeah, we're usually much more strict ourselves.
Yeah.
And Max, what is the, there's one thing on here, that temporary construction, storage, and/or office?
So that's for people that want to, when they are doing construction on a site, there needs to be an office, so people can rest or visit. Every, every new townhome, like, every residential development has one, so I'd assume every new development that wears under construction would.
Okay.
Would want that.
But it's temporary storage, that's what, I, I don't quite, where's the storage going to be in the back, or the, I don't know.
It would be a temporary site, so people, the, the construction site can store whatever materials and office.
Right.
In that specific area, instead of bringing everything off. Um, in that specific area, um, instead of bringing everything offsite every night.
Right, I, I understand that, but I'm just thinking, you know, temporary, when I was a planner, we had a, a temporary, um, buildings for Vassar College students, and, you know, twelve years later, we're going, wasn't that supposed to be temporary? So, I don't know.
It's a lot, so our ordinance does cover that, it's for the duration of the construction, of, during construction of that specific property. So, let, um, I know like, for example, Stone Creek, those Townhomes have a construction site, a, a trailer on the site. Once that whole development's completely built, we've fi- done the final CO, they would, would be required to remove that construction trailer.
Okay.
And everything off the site.
So this is of temporary construction of this site, of not someplace two miles away, is that?
That would be for every property in business center that was to develop.
Okay, got it.
They wouldn't, this site wouldn't require that, um, they're not constructioning, I, I don't believe they plan on constructing anything. But you would probably, I would recommend improving leaving that in in case this was approved and someone wanted to build a property. Um, then they wouldn't have to take everything, no one, no one could rest in office and they'd have to take everything offsite every night.
When the original land use was developed, was something like this category left out on purpose, or just?
So, um, from my understanding, when we were looking at the new zoning categories in twenty eighteen. Um, mixed use two was supposed to be an all encompassing zoning district that allowed almost every single use, as long as they had a mixed use component when developed. What happened was, they removed that, um, it's kind of been a, uh, less mixed use and more a mixed use table allowing specific uses. So when people develop, they, they have a, a variety of uses to choose from instead of developing it that way. That was the intent when the future, the small area plan created the Monroe Expressway Small Area Plan. It did go over this area, and everything that's in a small area plan was zoned mixed use, to have that mixed use category. And then some long, time along the way, everything got segmented into this use does this, this use does this, this use does you, does this. Even though it has the mixed use name, it's, it's technically only mixed use for retail, commercial, and residential, it's not mixed use for industrial. Industrial only has industrial uses.
So this is something that developed since the, um, Expressway came in.
Yeah.
Screwed everything up.
Yeah, the vision for this prop- this property and all the surrounding properties, even McGee Corporation was to complete redevelopment. Um, but that's a forty year plan, it's only been five years, four years.
Any other questions?
Oh, and.
Well. I, I just. I mean, I know this is in general, not just for this site, but some of these, like the trucking centers, truck stop. Freight terminal.
It's industrial use, this is a, this.
I know, but we have industrial, they can go to the industrial, can't they? Somebody wants to.
This intent is to have a mixture of the retail and industrial, so it's not just one or the other.
Right, I understand that, but I, hmm. It just seems like, you know, you, you have to have a minimum, there's a minimum of ten thousand square feet. You don't wanna put a truck terminal there, I don't.
I, I would assume, um, it's possible someone will wanna put a truck terminal somewhere in town and rezone it to business center. But, it's, it's just an industrial use, I think that's why it was included in this text, text amendment.
Can we take that one out? Anybody?
Truck terminal out, so. Yeah.
Okay, well.
But just remember not to, make it more general, that's what, cuz we had Mac kind of explain that, remember, yeah.
Yeah, I understand that, I just, I, you know, I think we have industrial, you know, plenty of industrial.
Yeah, but that industrial also includes like a heavier type industrial.
Right.
The business center doesn't.
Right, but they can still include the truck stops, I mean, truck stops.
It is right off Independence, um.
I know.
There's not really anywhere in town that anybody would be able to, to do that.
Tell them to go to Indian Trail or something.
He's as heavy as it gets.
Yeah.
Hmm?
McGee Corp, which is our neighboring property, the majority of the building, I mean, that, that's as heavy as industrial as it gets.
Mm-hmm.
You know, which backs up to our property.
Yeah.
I may make one other comment just from hearing, you know, the dialogue. The park's obviously been here since all the surrounding parcels have been undeveloped. And so they've been getting developed with some of the residential that you have mentioned. But our park, in the condition that it is, hasn't prevented any of those developers from wanting to come in and develop it. So we're not hindering or, uh, they're not not coming in and redeveloping it based on the plan because of who we are. Again, the buffers, the buffers are pretty massive, if you go to those ground photos in our presentation. It, it doesn't show on an aerial how big those buffers really are, if you, if you. That's a twenty foot creek.
Alright, yeah.
Wait, what, what are we looking at, what, what part are we looking at?
Just the buffers around, the property will have extensive buffers around it, and the development around it that it's already approved is required to maintain that buffer as well. So, so my suggestion is, instead of going through each individual thing, you could make a man approval or denial. Then point out specific uses that you would like me to bring up a town council for them to consider removing or adding. Does that sound okay?
Yeah.
Yeah, and we can discuss that after the meeting, so I can bring that up at the town council meeting. Would you?
Well, there's a couple, like the restaurant, why don't we just say?
You don't want any massage parlors?
No, no massage parlors.
We, I can definitely, we'll make note of that, uh, freight terminal, trucking stops, restaurants. Is massage parlor allowed in there? Okay. Um, definitely make note of that when I present to council, but I can also make a recommendation for anything that you tell me outside of the meeting as well.
Okay.
As long as, when I, um, just, let's talk about it, send me an email, look through it. And then we'll email everybody to make sure that they are in agreement.
Okay.
With those uses, and I'll also e- email them, um, when, uh, the agenda comes out for the town council meeting.
Okay.
Cuz they would have to like, they would have to agree to those uses as well at the council meeting. Being removed.
Well, if they don't, we just deny it.
Yeah.
Sorry, um.
Any other questions? Comments? Motion for?
No, close the hearing.
Close the hearing?
Yep.
Hearing's closed? Here, a, a motion for approval or denial?
Um, I will make a motion to approve this request, oh, yeah. Um. What, the recommendation of who? Um, TX two-two dot oh-seven dot oh-three.
You can say with the recommendation removed.
But, as presented with the, um, omission of restaurant, shopping center, and um, truck, trucking centers. And then anything else, put that in the motion, other things that we.
And then, and you can approve the statement of consistency and reasonableness. And you can say that, um, I would recommend saying that the, the use is reasonable but inconsistent with the future lanes.
Okay, and, um, I move, part of this is to, um, I don't have the statement of consistency.
So you can say, um, I can read it for you, you can, you can motion my response, would that be appropriate for you? I would say, I vote to also approve the statement of consistency and reasonableness for TX twenty-two zero-seven zero-three to amend the Stallings' development ordinance to have business center zoning district with a description, building lot type standards permitted uses, landscape, sign regulations, and open space regulations. And that the request is reasonable but inconsistent with the future land use plan.
So moved.
Second?
Second in motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Best, alright.
Thank you all.
Yeah. I'll email you guys tomorrow.
Okay, wonderful.
Be in touch.
Good evening.
I guess the next order of business is adjournment.
Yep.
Have a motion?
I'll move to adjourn the meeting.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? Adjourned.
Okay. Please stall on YouTube.